You ready to go? All right, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order, please, and call the roll.
Jeff Hardy.
Here.
Glenn Gracie.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Laurie Korniski.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First, we'll make a motion to agree with the September 30th, 2021 special meeting minutes. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jeff Hardy.
Aye.
Glenn Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Laurie Korniski.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, that takes us to old business. If anyone has anything?
I've got one update real quickly about the purchase agreement that we created for Leroy Township. Leroy trustees were given a copy of it, they were taking a look at it. Their council reviewed the purchase agreement, they were fine with it except for one item, they wanted to have some type of clarity, which was their environmental, who was responsible, they had, there was some type of environmental issue with the property. They were concerned most specifically about oil tanks that were on the property. They wanted to make sure that they were removed. I did reach out to Mr. Arlesek, and he was able to provide documents to show with photos that those tanks were removed back in the 90s.
1999.
1999. So now a ball again is in their court, they are, I think everything's fine, we're just gonna have to tie some things up. We have a closing date at the end of the year, which might have to be pushed back since we don't have it on the agenda now, we may have it on, but things are moving along.
Great. Anything else for the business?
Just one other thing, I know you're gonna be asking about strategic plan, we're getting back on it again, so we have a strategic team meeting scheduled for Friday, November 12th with our administration between 8:30 and 11:30. With our facilitators.
Is it full business then?
That's it.
All right, anybody else? All right, how about new business? All right, that takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports versus Superintendent Business Advisory. Dr. Bassett, we put a doodle poll, we're just waiting for responses from everybody to get the next Business Advisory Council meeting on the books. I know they're waiting for some furniture in the store and things like that, so I think we're trying to get that done pretty quickly, and that's it. So curriculum programming and boosters, Mr. Miley.
Okay. Curriculum and programming, we had a meeting October 19th at 8:00 AM. They're doing a curriculum audit as we speak, and they're going to be doing some in-servicing, I believe it's next week, over that with the teachers. And actually, everybody, right? Yeah, okay. So that professional development days are November 1st and 2nd. They're gonna be looking into, for the classified responsive classroom trainings, and the certified will do the review. They're gonna be looking at some CPI kind of stuff, restraint training, curriculum, team building, that kind of stuff. We have conferences coming up, November 3rd and 4th. And we're gonna do hybrid in-person for those conferences. And then...
Can I ask how that's gonna work? I was curious about that, I mean, because I mean, last year, we had, they were all virtual, so how are they gonna work that one? We usually have like, you either stand in line, or is it?
There's no more stand in line, you, so I know I got the Riverside email already.
Right.
I would assume the most have gotten run out. And you sign up, and then you indicate if you want virtual, if you indicate virtual, you get a Zoom link, or you're going to the teacher's classroom. We are not doing the stand in line, the style.
Perfect, so you're signing up for...
Yep, you come and you schedule your times, and you're here, and you have a 10-minute slot, at least up here. Elementarys have always been like that, but the same thing at the middle school, you will have a scheduled time with a specific team or a teacher.
I actually already signed up, it was really easy. Yeah, clearly I didn't open my email all the way and read it for my kids yet, so I will do that next. Thank you.
And the last thing we talked about was the state report card, and we're gonna have a special meeting to go over a lot of that as soon as they can digest the data.
Yeah, we have, we have some ready for tonight.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, Tom, anything I missed?
You have covered it all.
Okey dokey.
All right, that takes us into Buildings and Grounds Operations Alumni, Mr. Heck.
Okay, so we, I had a Buildings and Grounds meeting as well on the 19th, and just a few things, as, you know, we are heading into the winter season, the last several meetings I've asked about snowplow, you know, snow removal, and we're as good as we can get, so hopefully it'll be good and we will not have any issues. There, just a couple of relatively minor things, there's some doors that need to be replaced at Buckeye, Lemoore, and here at the campus. And so we are, we had one set of estimates, and we're gonna go out and get some more just to see if we can get a, you know, for the same type, same quality of doors, if we can get a better price. Additionally, we've had chronic issues with both the varsity softball field and the varsity baseball field, and so on the agenda tonight is a motion to approve a contract to improve both of those ball fields and bring them up to snuff.
So what are they doing to improve them? Is it, were those fields have the drainage issues, or they're underwater, or what is that?
So it's certainly the, what I have in my notes, the softball field is, just does not drain, as you may be familiar with, and then they're, actually, the infield is not particularly useful, either a lot of stones and other things, so that will be replaced. And, let's see here, and then I'm not sure, I think there's drainage issues as well at the varsity fields, could you?
Sure. With Ball Diamond, which is our varsity softball field, the field is loaded with gravel, it's a mixture of what was put underneath it for drainage and what was brought in at some point a few years ago to add extra dirt to the field. It's just not a good surface for our girls to play on. The base, the home plate and the pitcher's mound are movable. We do have individuals who will come in and will move them, so when we go to line the field for our varsity games, they are off kilt, so we have to go ahead and reset that. What will happen is, the company will come in, they will rock down the ground, they will remove about an inch or two of the surface, relay the surface, square up our Ball Diamond, so the home plate and pitcher's mound are exactly where they are, need to be in line with our foul poles, they will go ahead and then make sure that those are not movable objects. So when we do go out to play, they are what they need through the OHSAA. Diamond 3, as we know, is our varsity baseball field. We have an elevation issue between the infield, meaning the outfield, meaning if you go in the outfield, you stand roughly two and a half feet lower than the infield. So the idea here is to cut down the edge of the infield to create a smoother grade. The pitcher's mound, according to Serholt, the couch is too low, so we'll bring that up to high school standards, and we will also make sure that the diamond is square to the foul poles, and that the pitcher's mound and home plate do not move. And in the process, we're also gonna add some infield dirt to the areas of the infield to try to help with some of the drains as well. They just need to be, I mean, for our varsity players to be on it, for both sports, we should look, this will make us look a lot better when the spray rolls around.
Great. It'll be done by spring then?
That's the goal, yes. And if it's not done over the winter, it'll be done in time for play.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Just two more quick items, there were some external lighting issues at Parkside, and we were, research is being done, and work is being done to determine what the source of that is, and hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be able to say that it has been completed or at least identified, the issue identified and a plan put in place to correct. And then last meeting, we talked about the possibility of using the home next door that the board recently purchased, we've got some estimates on what it would take to get it up to snuff for us to use. It looks between, it's gonna be 25 and 30,000, which is more than I was thinking it might be, but anyway, I think more, more research is being done, there's no official proposal here, but just to give you a sense of what's going on with regard to that, and how much it might cost to bring it up to our ability to use it for our maintenance home, so more to come, and that's all I've got.
Would they have then replace what we have over at Concord?
No.
No?
It would not. There'd be, so basically, what it would be is get all the maintenance personnel, at least the supervisors in one location, so there'd be better communication amongst the team, and there'd be a few things that would be moved into the basement. There's some punches and machines and other things that can be placed down in the basement, which would help consolidate things, but it would not be large enough to, for us to, you know, not utilize the former Concord School. And that's it.
All right, and that takes us to Policy and Strategic Plan, Mrs. Korniski.
So for policy, Chuck from South East Lake had met with Niola on the 26th, on Tuesday, so we will have a first read of some new policy on the board meeting agenda in November. Hopefully, after review in November with the policy committee, we'll have the second read on in December, pending any changes. And I was gonna mention that there's a meeting on November 12th for the strategic plan, but we just got that updated, so after that, I think the goal is to have some timeline put together for how do we bring that completion, right?
Right.
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kalas.
Can we cut? Just gonna go over our COVID situation, just to make the board aware of where we are in these numbers. Since August 26th, you can see the numbers up there, right now, if you look at the enrollment for each of the schools, I have a percent of the enrollment in each of those schools that have been identified as positive cases. For instance, 99 at Riverside Campus, we have 1,797 kids there, that's 5.5% for the campus. Lemoore, there's 616 students there, you take 48, divide it into six, 16, you have 7%. Riverview, we have 3.3%, Buckeye, 5.8%, Parkside, 2.9%, and 1.1% for Melbridge. And that's since August 26th. Again, those percents represent the number of students in that building that have been identified as having COVID. This, this slide is almost useless, I'm just going to, don't even try to look at it, it's just all jumbled up, but we tried to make it so it's understandable, but it's not. So I just wanted to talk to the board about how many COVID cases we had per week. There's not really much of a trend here, because when we first started, August 26th through the 29th, there were four cases. From August 30th to September 5th, we had 18. From September 6th to September 12th, we had 42. That was our highest week, September 6th through September 12th. Now, the 6th, we weren't here because it was Labor Day, but we still had reports of three cases to the schools. September 13th through September 19th, 38 cases. From September 20th to 24th, 20. September 27th to October 3rd, we had 23. From October 4th to October 10th, we had 29. And then we had a spike, and I know the board knows that too, we received a few emails, but from October 11th to October 17th, we had 40, it was the second highest week. And it didn't, it seemed like it was happening throughout the county as well. But then it died down again, because between the 18th of October and October 24th, we had 16. And as of Monday and Tuesday, we had nine. What does that look like compared to other districts? There's a slight change in how we calculated this. Last time, I believe it was the first time we calculated this, we had included staff in the total, along with the students, and then divided that number into the enrollment, which is a little bit skewed, it would show a higher percentage. So what we did now, this is my accurate way of doing it, is we have the estimated enrollment for all the schools in Lake County, and we have the student number and the student percent of enrollment, and we just listed the staff cases in each of the districts. So in other words, if you take 206 student positive cases at Riverside, and divide it into the 4,296, you have 4.8% of our total student population that have been identified as having COVID. Manner is at 2.6%, Willoughby Eastlake is at 4.1. Now, there's not any in the others, because Pageville, Perry, and Madison did not clarify between staff and students, but I took the liberty in my own notes to add it, just to give you an idea whether, I don't know if they have staff in there or not. But Pageville is 2.6%, Perry is 3.7%, Wickliffe, we have 2.9%, Madison, I have 5.4, it seems to be the highest at this point, and Kirkland, 3.7%, and Fairport's 4.1. Now, if you rank them by the most COVID cases per student, would be Madison, then Riverside would be second, and then there's a tie for third, Fairport, and Willoughby Eastlake. There's also a tie for fourth in Kirkland and Perry, and Wickliffe would be fifth, and Manner would be sixth. These positive case numbers were found on each district's website as well. This is just a COVID update, okay, so these are quarantine numbers since August 26th to each of the buildings. The next slide is jumbled too.
So if I could, going back to slide five, is there, is there any way we could, so this is a culmination or an aggregate number since the beginning of school, would it be possible to get a slide on current, those students that are currently in quarantine?
The problem is, do we count days in quarantine or do we count individuals in quarantine? That, it's hard to track that way. These are non-active 429, 12 quarantines that we've put in, kids into quarantine.
So it's 429 students have been in quarantine?
That's correct.
Total, but we have a slide coming up here that's gonna show you how many people were absent per day versus how many people were absent due to COVID positive or COVID quarantine. So these quarantines you see here, that's, that's new, so like, I can't see in front of me, but you know, five people on Monday, and then another three people on Tuesday, that doesn't mean it's only five people district-wide active, because you throw in all the quarantines and COVID positives from the people from last week or out for 10 days, so the attendance numbers will give you a better idea of active people out.
For people that don't know, Nick Karabine is our Director of Communications and Marketing, and he's also the one that posts all these statistics and updates on a regular basis. I know you know who he is, I'm not sure.
You know, right, and people can't see him, because he's just go from behind the camera, so.
So this is, this is our attendance. So for example, on September 23rd, Riverside absences were 98, there were 98 kids that were absent. Out of those 98, 25 were either COVID positive or COVID quarantine, okay? That would give you an idea going all the way down, I'm not gonna read all of them to you, but just so you know, that MW means medically waived. 90-some percent of our medically waived excuses, medical excuses are COVID-related with these numbers. This is a, this is a representation of the last slide.
So they called in with like, the flu or some other illness, that's not medically waived?
No.
Okay.
Well, we get notes from doctors, when we get notes from doctors, we have it medically waived, we're also adding the COVID onto it because there's a little bit more behind when kids home, and tracking those things in there are a little bit corollary to the most. This is a representation of the last slide, as you can see, the number of students that were absent in the orange on this slide, as you can see it, are the actual COVID cases. And again, it's my week. There's a couple other updates with quarantine that came out just on October 25th, I'm still trying to feel my way through these, so bear with me here. I have what the Lake County General Hub District has sent out to us. If a student is notified that they have been in close contact with a person who tested positive for COVID-19 virus, they can continue to attend school if they are closely monitoring for symptoms and are vigilant about masking, mask-wearing for 14 days following exposure. Again, we can recommend it, and it's ultimately the parent decides, you can't force the students to wear or quarantine. So they should switch to isolation protocol, is the recommendation, if they experience any of the symptoms. If the parent's able to feel that the mask-wearing is not, they're not able to do it, then they are recommended to stay home. This also came out as recent data from Lake County Jail has demonstrated that the rate of infection in quarantine students is lower than 5%, which is a good thing. So we set the kids into quarantine, only 5% of those, they believe, are the ones that are actually contracting COVID.
So just to make sure, so 95, we quarantine students and 95% of them never show symptoms?
That's the way I understand what they're telling us.
Thank you.
ODH quarantine updates, again, is similar guidance that's coming from the HOD Department of Health. It's recommended, recommendation is informed by a growing body of national experience, pilot in Warren County, and experience shared by other local health districts that point towards a low number of individuals with direct contact to a COVID-19 positive individual within school setting who would convert to positive cases. Also, eligibility to participate in masks to stay is contingent of high exposure, meaning in school setting or school-related activities. This is the one piece, again, I need to dig into a little bit more to understand what they mean by this, but I did put it in there because it was something that they did mention. I will update the board one way or another, either through a Friday pack or another meeting. All right, state report card. All right, so I know the board received some information about the state report card, we're breaking down just a few items here that have been scored. As you know, with COVID, they took away the actual letter grades for districts. So what I wanted to start with is a performance index, and it's defined by the ODE as measures of the achievement of every student, not just whether, not just whether or not they reach proficient. Districts and schools receive points for every student's level of achievement. The higher the student's level, the more points the school earns towards its index. This rewards districts and schools that improve the performance of highest and lowest performing students. Okay? So what we're gonna see in the next slide is the actual state report card performance index, and we broke it out by Lake County schools. As you can see, Kirkland has the highest performance index, the performance index score is based on 120 points. So you'll see it sometimes reported two different ways, ones with a score and sometimes with a percent. The state does both. So Kirkland scored 109, 90.9 points out of 120. If you take that, 90.9, divide it into 120, you're gonna get 75.8%. So Kirkland in the county, Lake County, has a highest, their school district has the highest performance index out of the nine schools. We happen to be second, we have the second highest performance index of the nine schools in Lake County, at 83.9% for the score and 70% as a percent of score. After that, it goes Perry, Madison, Manner, Willoughby Eastlake, Wickliffe, Fairport, and Pageville. I also took the scores of the components that are graded at the secondary level and compared our high schools. Now, there's nine districts in Lake County, but there's 10 high schools, because you have to count two in Willoughby Eastlake, which is up. So if you look here, you're gonna see performance index, if you concentrate on that last column, we have 94.4% performance index for Perry, or I'm sorry, for Kirkland, 87.3 for Perry, and then Riverside High School has 79.4. So out of 10 high schools, public schools in Lake County, Riverside is third out of the 10. Those are the actual scores that you see there, the components of percent of students that are proficient in those areas. You try to get it to be 80s, as you can see, the tests, you know, from Riverside down at this point, remember it's close to 80, but somewhat close to 80, but didn't reach that benchmark. There's two in Perry, and I can't figure what, four in, one, two, three, four in Kirkland out of the six. The little red numbers you see next to those scores indicate what our rank is compared to the other schools in Lake County. For instance, out of the 10 high schools, we scored third highest in algebra, eighth in government, fifth in US history, third in biology, third in English Language Arts, and fifth in geometry. This is our graduation rates in Lake County, I have them ranked. We have Wickliffe at the top at 98%, we're second to the last at 94.5. Last two years, it was 88.2, so we were able to at least increase it by 2.3% in our, for our graduation rate, so we're going, we're turning in the red direction. We wanna be somewhere in mid-90s, if not 100% in the mid-90s, so we're working at that right now. Graduation rate is a, is a combination of a lot of different things, they take the cohort of students that are in the ninth grade, and they follow them through to make sure that they graduate. If they don't graduate on time in that four-year period, they also have a fifth-year component, excuse me, component as well. This represents the four-year cohort component, which means that of all the kids that started in ninth grade, we have 90.5 that are graduating on time. This is again, a graduation by subgroup, as you know.
Just a quick question, I don't know if you've been able to get it, when you take the, when you take into account the, those who graduate within the fifth year, does that change anything on the, on the graph, on the chart?
No, I'm gonna have to look, I, there, I can look it up while we're sitting here, but there is a fifth-year component, no, it won't affect four years, it's two separate.
Right, I understand, but I guess, can, do we make ground up, I guess, in the kids who grad?
Yeah, there are some kids that are behind, but we get them, they'll graduate within that fifth year, yes. So the state report card graduation by subgroup, the first one is all students, that's the purple one. The goal for all students is 88%. How they set these goals, I don't know, just so you understand it. But it's 88% is the goal, 90.5 is, is our score, so we met that goal. White, non-Hispanic, the goal was 90.2, and so was the score, so we're right on the line there, but we did get it. Hispanic students, it was 79, they knocked it out of the water at 87.5, it scored a lot higher than what the goal was. The economically disadvantaged, the goal was 78.6, they had 81.8, they met the goal. And the last one, the students with disabilities, the goal is 76.9, and we scored a 59.1, we did not make that, that one. So we have some work in that area to do.
Jim, is that, that for four years? So they graduate at the same rate as?
Yeah, it's a, it's a same graduation rate, but they're breaking it out by subgroup.
So those who stay on until they're 22?
That is, that does impact us. So that's, I was going to ask you this, such education students, they can stay in school up to age 22. So we do have students that go on to vocational programming or stay for other reasons, that does impact that score. But we have started to dive into some of that data and look at the population and individual... and look at the population and individuals that are not graduating within their four-year cohort. And again, as Dr. Kala said, we have some work to be done. It's not just the students that are staying on for vocational. There are some other reasons that they're not graduating.
Okay. Next is student attendance rate. Just for your own information, again, we ranked them here. Kirkland students have the best attendance rate at 96%. Manor is 95.3, Riverside's third out of the nine districts at 94.5, retired with Willoughby Eastlake. And they're all close, I mean, you know, all the way down to the bottom there, not too far off. This is Prepare for Success. I'm going to explain what this is. Whether training in the technical field or preparing for work or college to prepare for success component puts in how well we prepared our Ohio students, our art students for future opportunities. Kirkland was number one, Manor two, Perry three, Wickliffe four, Madison five, Riverside was six, Willoughby Eastlake seven, Fairport eight and Pageville nine. It scores a lot of different things, okay? One is ACT participation. And for us, we had 90.5% of our students took the ACT, so we get points for that. ACT remediation free, which means that 26.4% of our students scored at least 18 on English, 22 on math and 21 on reading. So if they do that, we get points for that. The students score those, at those benchmarks. We had 4% of our students take the SAT because we do encourage the ACT because we help prep for that as well. SAT remediation is any student who scored at least 430 on the writing, 459 on the reading and 520 on the math. We also get points for our honors diploma, 17.4% of students who received the honors diploma in our district. We also get points for industry recognized credentials. For students who received 12 points through an industrial recognized group of credentials that we have in the welding lab. We had 27.9% of our students who took the, at least one AP course. We had 13% of our students scoring three or better on an AP exam. Of those students that are taking AP courses. And we also have 35.8% of our students who earned at least three college credits. They also give points for international baccalaureate, taking that exam, but we don't have that program in our district.
Does that mean that we really only have about 35% of our students taking classes at Lake County or whatnot? I would have thought it was more than that.
The percentage is actually those who are earning three college credits, 38.5.
So I don't know where you pulled, where that data came from, but where it might be, where it might not be showing our exact numbers is that we, so the kids have to get the first part of that. They have to score like remediation free on the ACT, earn 12 credentials or what was the third gem I can't?
Yeah, if the district or school earns one point for every student who earns any of the following, ACT or SAT remediation free scores and honors diploma or 12 points through an industrial recognized credential of group credentials in one of 13 high demand career fields. And then you get bonus measures for every student who earns at least, earns a point. I'm sorry, every student who earns one point and does one of the following, district or school earns point three additional points. Advanced placement test, scoring three or more points on at least one test. International baccalaureate test, scoring four points or more, but we don't have that program. Or college credit plus for a student who earns at least three credits.
So do you see, yeah, that percentage is only the percent of the kids who earned the one point. So you had to do one of those three things and then now they're saying 38% of those kids also earned three credits.
So if they didn't do one of the first three, they don't?
They don't, they aren't counted in that second one. That, for this particular thing, well, that's, I mean, that's, that's the state's way to, you know what I mean? It's not a measure of how many kids we have taking CCP classes, you know what I mean? That's not the measure.
Right.
So you have to hit the first one to get the second one. So you can't use that as a percentage of our kids that do earn CCP credits.
I was going to say, that seems really low.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll count anybody that doesn't, it only takes one course, you know? There's something they can't take care of.
Right, so. The next slide is improving at-risk K3 readers. This component looks at how successful district and school are getting, struggling readers to be on track to proficiency. They did really well, almost so much so that we weren't sure if the, if these scores were accurate. And there's no indication right now that they're not accurate, so we put it up there kind of apprehensively. So I'm going to turn it over to Melissa though, and we were talking about this and she explains it a lot more clearly than I can and she's neck deep in this every day, so.
Kind of my thing. So I will, I will say that when Jim and I had this conversation, this has really been a focus for our instructional coaches is to strengthen our remediation at the primary level with the idea that if we don't provide the strong foundation, they're not going to be successful later on. And I've said for years, it takes a while to see any kind of gains in education. That's just the way it is, you know, it takes a long time. So here's what this improving at-risk K3 readers means. So at the beginning of every year, by September 30th, we have to assess all of our K3 students in reading. And we report to the state whether they're on track or off track. Okay, so that happens at the beginning of every year. Any student who is off track goes on to a reading improvement monitoring plan, which we call a RIMP. So all of those kids not on track go into, go onto a RIMP and that's where we talk about, they have data meetings, they sit down with the teacher, with the principal. We do full days almost in every elementary building, sometime multiple days in our bigger buildings. And they talk about what are we going to do for this student? What's the intervention tutor going to do? What's the classroom teacher going to do? And we make a plan and that's what happens over the course of the year. So then that cohort of students, so let's say we take our first grade cohort, when they go into second grade and we assess them again at the beginning of the year, the state then looks at, did you take that kid from off track to on track? And then you get points for how many students you move from off to on. Now here's the kicker. The RIMP is necessary, not only so we know what interventions we're giving, but it's also necessary because if you don't put a student on a RIMP, they ding you. So they look at that first grade cohort and then they look at them in second grade and then they look to see, did you actually create a plan? So even if we move them from off to on, if we don't do it with a plan, it results in a negative against us. So that's kind of the easiest version to tell you how this, with the end result being in third grade that they pass the third grade state test, obviously at the end of the year, so.
We've been talking about that for a long time. Because I remember back when I used to come to the district leadership team meetings and that's been a long time since I've attended them. That was the main focus was like starting kids and getting them on track early. So that's, that's, it is, it's a long time in the process.
Yes, but it's exciting and I think it's kudos to our, not to our staff at the primary level, how hard they have been working to, to try to get kids on track before it's, before they're so far behind that closing that gap is, is so much more difficult.
And I think, I think a lot of it is testament to those, those teams, that the building teams, the teacher base teams, that's really, really important and they, they do put in a lot of work.
It is, it's putting a priority in providing those types of resources through the board, allowing us to get literacy coaches and tutors in our, in our buildings.
And it's analyzing data, right? Like, it really does the trick.
All of the plans are aligned.
Obviously, I'd say it's addition to our teachers and our tutors, you know, and support at home too.
Good.
This is the last item. We, we are, thank you, by the way, Dr. Noah.
No, I was a little bit, this is my father. Shot to foot, I mean. I was like you.
Well, our business teacher, Mr. Ross, he has a principles of business course and they've launched a Beaver Nation Spirit Store. The course was designed by Mr. Ross and his applied tech, he's the applied tech department chair. He, he aligned the course with the federal business standards that we have and they're in the process of putting the store together right now. It was Mrs. Gagian's old room, but they have cabinets up right now. They have a couple of work areas where they press images on shirts and they're going to sell them. And it's really neat, the apparel presses were purchased by grant money awarded from the Martha Holding Agenda Foundation. They just don't give money. You have to apply for it, you have to get a skill to focus on what you're trying to do and then they determine if it's something worthy of their grant. Students have created the apparel designs that are available and the store will be open during the third block on Blackways for students and staff. Several school organizations have already put in orders and there are plans to open the spirit store to the community during school sponsored events. It's right up those stairs basically is where the classroom is. And next year the plan is to embed a customer service industry record match credential in the principles of business course. And before we get any further, Melissa wanted to model one of the shirts.
Beaver Nation is the name of the store, so they printed it right while I was up there the other day, so.
Really good.
Yeah, they were up there doing some work and this is the logo that they shot into the stands at the football game too, to promote what they're doing, so. I think they're right out of the gate because it was Mr. Ross and four students furiously pricing T-shirts because they, out of the gate got a bunch of orders that I don't think they, so they don't have any stock ready in case anybody wants to own one of these. This is right now a collector's item, but it's super exciting, it's very fun.
Yeah, some of the designs they came up with are really pretty nice.
Who wrote their grant?
That Chris, I believe Dr. Bassett and Mr. Ratzus put together like a year ago, a year and a half ago.
They're hard to get money from. Yeah.
Dr. Lewis, my report.
Excellent, thank you very much. That then takes us to the finance audit personnel legislative, Mrs. Grassi, your update please.
I'll touch on legislative first. There's a whole lot of legislation that's, that's sitting in committee right now down in Columbus. OSBA is monitoring all of that. We get our weekly updates and I'm reading that and as things come out of committee and head to legislate, the legislative floor, I will update the board. Right now there is nothing on the floor for review. We had a finance committee meeting on the 21st, last Thursday at 8:00 a.m. We did receive the update on Leroy property at that time. We talked about all the agenda items that are on our agenda this evening. We talked about the grants for the Chromebooks, the grants that we're accepting, that we're going to be using for the Chromebooks and you see those things on the agenda one right after the other. And that's pandemic assistance dollars. We talked about the contract with Signature Health and that we're using them in addition to Crossroads to provide services for our students. And then we talked a lot about personnel because we, we had some time to do that and it was, it was good to get an update on our personnel. We are having a difficult time finding some staff positions, both certified and classified. And so that information is actually on our website and I would encourage people to look at those things. We talked about increasing our classified sub rates in order to remain competitive so that we can attract folks to those positions. And I just, we spent some time talking about the certified staff positions that we're having some difficulty filling and why that is and what we can be doing about that. So that was a good conversation to have.
We did find a biology teacher too.
Oh, excellent. When is that individual starting?
Monday.
Yay, good.
Yeah, specifically the science positions that are, that are hard to fill right now.
If there's anything that we can get out of anyone watching board meetings is a fact, other than what's going on in school, is that we have a lot of opportunity for people to work. A lot of different positions and not always certified positions. We're looking for bus drivers, we're looking to have custodial substitutes, we're looking for custodians, we're looking at, you know, frequently maintenance. We don't have any openings, I don't think now in maintenance, but any, anything. If people want to apply and they just want to do a, you know, generally a day's work, I'm happy to have them.
And those postings are listed on our website. They're listed on the E S C, the Western Reserves website as well. And as we post those things out to Facebook, I encourage people to share those with their,
Absolutely.
their neighbors and friends and if they know anybody who, who is looking for positions such as that, that is.
For, for busing, you need a CDL, so you have to go through training, but the other positions, we can start you pretty quickly.
And one of the things too, that they've become more lax with right now is the certification requirements for being a substitute. If anyone's interested, please reach out to central office and we can direct them to our substitute managing system.
That's for teachers.
Yeah, bachelor's degree, you can actually get a substitute license for now, so.
Those are, those are one year, you have to renew those every year?
Yes.
But it's not that difficult, so. So that was our meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Platt, you're up.
Okay, just to echo off of a couple of comments by Mrs. Grassi, the Emergency Connectivity Fund grant was actually $503,000 that we received for, to purchase, for hotspots and to purchase 1,571 Chromebooks for Chromebook replacements. So that was, that was a very significant grant. That actually comes through the American Rescue Plan. There was about, I think it was $7.17 billion allocation through that nationwide. It goes through what's called the E-Rate process, which is like usually for like technology related items and they ran this grant through that process. And Mr. Renwick applied, you know, several months ago and then now we're working through that process. The hard part about the E-Rate process is they have to approve the quote that you get in order to free to move forward. And since so much time has passed, the Chromebooks we applied for are no longer available. So now we have to put in a revision to approve the new quote and now we're waiting for that one. So hopefully they get approval in time and those next ones won't slip away. There's just a lot of little hoops you gotta jump through to get through it, but we'll, we'll get there eventually.
So they're sitting in the Pacific.
So we have it on the agenda for approval and, you know, if by some chance it has to change, at least we already have the authorization, we'll move forward with if we have to get a different model. Because there's, there's many different models of Chromebooks and they're always coming out with new ones. So it's, you know, that's probably the biggest challenge with that grant. But once we receive those, we receive those Chromebooks, then we put a request for reimbursement and.
Yeah, that's a, that's a federal grant and so you have to jump through federal hoops in order to get that and they do require the documentation upfront and it's a pain, but it's worth it.
Other thing I wanted to update you on is our GAAP conversion, which is basically our annual financial statements for the fiscal year and then June 30th. We are working on finalizing those reports, hopefully soon. They're, they're due by sometime later in November. There's a new GASB statement, GASB 83, that we have to report a liability for, potential liability for removing the underground storage tank at some point and it's time to replace that. So we have to come up with the cost of that, so we have to reach out to like an engineer and try to figure out what that would cost to do soil testing and remove that once that, and reaches the end of its useful life, include that in our financial statements. So it's a little hiccup on there, but other than that, everything else is going smooth. And the audit is already underway and that's been going, you know, as expected so far.
I did get that email from them too, I need to, I'm going to actually send it in.
Yeah, so they usually, usually our audit, you know, it runs through, it varies each year. Sometimes through December, sometimes in the January or February, or the autumn at least. Probably auder state, usually by March of each year. Five-year forecast is due next month. I already have a draft completed and a review of the next finance committee meeting. The challenging part is the statutory deadline is November 30th and we have to file with the Ohio Department of Education. But as, as we've talked about before, there's a new funding formula that went into effect, effective July 1st, that O D E is still working on programming that and getting calculations and they won't have that out till December. So we have to put a forecast together in November to reflect the numbers that we don't know till December. So all us treasurers in the state are kind of putting our best.
Makes sense.
At least it wasn't October.
Right.
It used to be.
It was supposed to be ready in October and it got delayed to December. You know, there's a guarantee, there's multiple guarantees in the formula, so we won't receive less funding. You know, there's a guarantee, there's multiple guarantees in the formula, so we won't receive less funding than we did last year before the, the cuts that, you know, for the COVID related cuts that we had. But as far as what's the true effect of it, we won't truly understand until, till, till December. So, right now, the forecast is based on, if you remember, when we go over the state budget, there's those printouts from the Legislative Service Commission that kind of gives an estimate of what they think it'll look like, so the forecast would be kind of based on those figures, because that's just the best information we have at this time. And as, as we know, charter schools and open enrollment, we don't have those deductions anymore, so those expenses go away, so our revenue will go down for state funding, but our expenses will go down as well, because those aren't passing through our books, they'll be funded directly, so we don't have that revenue and that expense pass through that we've had in the past, so. It'll change, there's multiple lines of the forecast, and so it's, so the November forecast, I'm not sure how much detail I'm going to present in that one, because it, it's a lot of assumptions going into it, and it could all change when we get the, the actual numbers the following month. Two other facility improvements that I wanted to bring up that were not, that won't be on the agenda because they're below the threshold I wanted to make you aware of is we have a quote to install some, two lights out back behind the field house for the bus parking area. It gets very dark in the mornings and evenings, especially coming up into winter time, so those, we're gonna be issuing a purchase order to, to get those installed in the coming weeks. And then also, we have a quote for a window film, reflective window film that we're gonna install at Mel Ridge, on the parking lot side of the building, that's supposed to help the building not heat up as much. As we know, we've always had issues with that building being a little warm in the, when it's closer to summer time, so we're hoping to get that installed, I think, over winter break. So, when, you know, the next summer comes around, hopefully it'll help keep those rooms a little bit cooler in Mel Ridge. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was on tonight's agenda is the OFCC master's facility plan revision that we need to consider for approval tonight. It's basically an update from what we approved two years ago, which essentially is an update to our plan. No, no real changes in it, and it just allows us that if the board decides in twenty, in twenty twenty-two to go on the ballot, they can do that by having us approved. The deadline to have that signed is by tomorrow, so somebody has to prove tonight, we'll have to, there's the docu-sign, I think we have to sign tonight, so it's in doubt tomorrow. And that concludes my report.
The permanent appropriations revision, that's for the grant funding?
Yeah, that's just to, the permanent appropriations is to approve the budget, so the Emergency Connectivity Fund grant, it goes in a separate fund, Fund five ninety-nine, so it's separate from the general fund, it's a federal grant fund. That's what tonight's revision on the agenda is to budget those funds, so we can issue a purchase order for those programs. As I think, you get a grant, then there's multiple steps between adjusting appropriations, approving the purchase, and so, and approving the grant, so there's three different items on the agenda related to that. And that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions? Good. All right, that takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic, comments are limited to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Barry Clifford, I'm a thirty-four year resident of the township. I've had six children graduate through the school system. I've been really pleased.
I know the Cliffords.
My oldest graduated in ninety-eight, and my youngest graduated two thousand thirteen. So, I'd like to premise any comments or questions I have here by the fact, I love the school system. I'm retired now, I just retired a year ago, and I plan on staying in the school system. I vote for every single levy over thirty-four years for the school system. But recently, and I'm looking at the election that's coming up here on Tuesday, and I'm a little confused really at this point in time. I'm seeing some new people who are running for office, running under a no CRT. And I would just like to know from the school board, is it currently being taught in the school? And I know that there's something, because I actually got an N E O magazine, and on the front cover it said, "Teaching anti-racism in the schools," and there's people, and they quote these people and so forth. So, I know it exists in our country and in school systems, but specifically the fact that I know there's candidates who are running, and they're running under this, where, what the current school, school board says about this, what their thought process, where it's going into the future. Again, I'm, I'm a little perplexed by all of this, and all the controversy and politicizing of all this. I, I would just like to get a little feedback from your community that I've lived and supported for thirty-four years.
Dr. Mahoney, can you just speak first of the curriculum as far as CRT goes?
Absolutely, Riverside has not, in the past, nor do we have any plans to train our teachers or to implement the CRT curriculum. So, I, I understand and agree with you, and I actually appreciate what you said, recognize what's going on in the country and in other school districts, but it is not occurring here, so.
Thank you, appreciate that. I wish there were more people here to hear that, too, because I know many, many people I've talked to within the township are very much concerned about it.
I think we all feel a lot of those questions, too, just generally speaking.
I think they're trying to make fear in people's minds.
And I, I would also like to just state for the public that, you know, Riverside does a great job of recognizing diversity, I think. I think we, we recognize that racism has no place in this district, and, and I don't, I don't think CRT is a positive or a negative on, on having to like have that as a curriculum or not having it as a curriculum in order to say that we, we don't approve of those kinds of things here in this district, and we try really hard to make sure that we are a district that recognizes everyone is equal.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that will take us to the consent agenda, consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. And any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and go about individually. Our first one will be finance and audit, please, Mrs. Grassley.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through N.
I'll second.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the following for their donations here. We have two hundred dollars to Side from S K Day Inc., DB Smoothie King, and a hundred and twenty-five dollars to Boys Cross Country from Custard Guys, doing business as East Coast Custards, so thank you to those organizations. So, any other discussion on the finance items? All right, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Hart.
Aye.
Belinda Grassley.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried, personnel?
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through H. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items? Hello? All right, can we call the roll?
Belinda Grassley.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Hart.
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through C.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Okay, the roll? Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Hart.
Aye.
Belinda Grassley.
Aye.
Motion carried, buildings and grounds?
Motion to approve the items on the buildings and grounds, consent agenda items A and B, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Misses Krasny, any, any discussion? All right, can you call the roll, please?
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Hart.
Aye.
Belinda Grassley.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. Please, then, to the Board of Education, update, anyone's got anything?
I do, I'm not recording. Something that we're excited about is we're gonna open up the field house again for people to be able to walk, especially during the winter months. We're gonna start November eighth, it's gonna be Monday through Friday, seven to eleven, I think it is the hours.
In the morning?
In the morning.
Any day of school, though.
We'll try to keep kids from parking over there, but that's gonna be the struggle.
So, now weekends, just Monday through Friday.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest to anybody, any retired people coming up at seven, because that's during the course of arrival, you know what that looks like? I don't want people to get angry with us, so you might want to wait till after seven fifteen, you know.
That's exciting.
Be better.
I'd like to say good luck to the football team this weekend.
Dr. K, this was required that, that we have asked you to give identification.
Just show your ID, that's all, behave.
I, I just have one, one item, I, anybody who's been paying attention to the news knows that about six weeks ago, the National School Board Association had sent a letter off to Washington talking about concerns regarding interactions between parents and school boards. We obviously have been in a contentious time, but, you know, that, that letter was, was pretty provoking, I think. And, and with regard to that, the Ohio School Board Association has seized their membership in the National School Board Association, which I think is a really solid statement. So, I just wanted to give kudos to the members, the trustees of the Ohio School Board Association for making that move.
They put that on their press release two days ago, didn't they?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah. Just also a reminder that our board work session on November eighteenth is the board self-assessment that Mrs. Krasny has put together for us, or remind me, were you going to send us something additional, right?
No, there was no additional material.
Okay, nothing additional, just.
If, if you do not have the examples, I can resend them via email.
And you gave us hard copy of your materials.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Six o'clock, right?
Yes.
That's just the board?
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't want to come?
You want to assess us, too? It's your opportunity to assess us.
Belinda's cooking.
I, I would also like to thank our high school principal and administrative team for putting together the apparel sale that they do at the beginning of the year for staff. I bought some cool stuff, like this year, they had some really, really nice selections of things. They do a really nice job with that, so.
Anything else? Okay, with that, then I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight oh three PM, if I have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Hart.
Aye.
Belinda Grassley.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much.